All right, good evening. This is Wednesday, February 15th at 7:00 PM. This is the regular business meeting of District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsati?
Present.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
And a core Ms. President.
All right, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Right. Then, at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, then, that takes us to the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Dan. Our first item on the agenda tonight is to recognize the students that are here for a variety of different student achievement awards. So I want to introduce Dr. Angela Dozel and Mr. Chris Harvalis. Angela's our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Chris is the Assistant Principal here at Hauser, and they are going to come up on the stage. Actually, I'm going to ask that the board come up on the stage, and then we will be there to shake hands, or fist bump, or elbow tap, whatever we prefer to do these days, with the students as they receive their awards. I'm just going to follow the crowd.
I'm Dr. Angela Dozel, the Director of Teaching and Learning, and I am very excited to have our first in-person student recognition ceremony since the pandemic. This is a great time. It's always wonderful to recognize our students for their various achievements, whether in academics, athletics, or in leadership, or community service. And it's nice for our students to have their peers and families recognize them for their achievements as well. So thank you for taking time out of your evening tonight to come. And with that, Mr. Harvalis is going to call students up. Students, when you come up to get your certificates, you'll come up these stairs, and then shake hands, fist bump, high five, whatever you choose, as you go down the row, and then exit out the door that heads to the hallway that heads to your gym classes, and then come back around and come in. Because as you can see, there are no stairs on the other side of the stage. All right? So congratulations to all of you, and without further ado, Mr. Harvalis.
Our first honorees of the evening are eighth-grade boys' basketball Salt Creek Valley Champions. Boys, when you hear your name, this is the test. We're all going to pass, right? You're going to come up, fist bump, shaking, okay. First, Oliver Ficori. Max Cusper. Bubba Novak. Aiden O'Brien. Will Rio. Mitch Schuerman. Gus Smith. Next, we have our girls' varsity volleyball, SCV Conference Champions. We have Franny Baker. Lola Baker. Clara Chitam. Violet Fury. Juliana Gamboa. Maggie McCoy. Naomi Venhorst. And Clara Zimmerman. The next team that we'll be honoring tonight is our cheerleading competition team. Our cheerleading competition team. And they won the Riverside Brookfield Cheerleading Matchup Champion Invitational. Avery Blair. Charlotte Coponeo Calis. Avery Cavalier. Sammy Dawn. Giada DiCola. Mia Marchetti. Paloma Mendoza. Naomi Astrouski. Addie Segura. Next, we have our Whiskey Student Leadership Conference student attendees. We have Dylan Bolts. At this time, we'll be starting to honor our Students of the Month, starting with our September Students of the Month. I have Jada Jamisola. Sloane McNally. Jayla Morris. Louis Jarra. And Brandon Ruiz. Our October Students of the Month are Ella Burswah. Mia Melvin. Will Harbeck. Lola Baker. Addie Segura. And Juniper Wendell. Our November Students of the Month winners were Jasleen Hopson Andino. Josh Thompson. Aleah Black. Elena Gelb. Mahaila Rorka. Christian Gonzalez. For our December Students of the Month, I have Henry Hall. Dominic Koal. Reese Zaluski. Henry Bacchus. Henry Polannick. Yeah, I think that's the list. Thank you, guys. Great job. Congratulations, you guys.
We welcome you to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but if you would like to leave, we are welcome to do so.
I know the bill has rung, but if you would like to stay.
I don't know, I was actually wondering the same thing.
My routine.
At this point, I have to say.
I will continue on with the superintendent's report. The next thing I have is to share our schedule for February Institute Day, which is actually this Friday. And I want to thank Angela and Pam and Nora. They did a lot of work putting this schedule together, and I think when you take a look at it, you'll see a lot of our goals and key areas of professional development really identified through the kinds of professional learning that our staff will be engaged in on Friday. So wanted to share that. Any questions about that? And then, just, I continue to share our virtual kindergarten information night. We'll go live on March 2nd, and really, it's just a very important date for families in our community. No, it really opens up our registration, and we had to get the ball rolling and start to gather our enrollments and planning for next year's incoming kindergarten class. And that is all I have. Sorry, Martha, I was trying to get my computer unlocked. I was kind of curious on that Institute Day, just the equity and belonging piece, is that going to be like an outside, like something led from somebody outside, or is that something that we're putting on? Or I was just kind of curious about that one.
Sure.
The equity and belonging piece is going to be put on by Facing History and ourselves. So we utilize Facing History and ourselves through, mostly through our social studies curricular resources, but we also utilize it in English Language Arts classes in the junior high. So they're coming in, and they have a person who's heading the equity and belonging piece.
All right, cool. Yeah, I was just, I just was curious how that was being executed, so, no, it's good. Thanks.
Yep.
in. What goes into some of the Student of the Month determinations? Were those like sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders? Sorry.
So Student of the Month is a Hauser tradition, and every grade level selects a Student of the Month. It's based on some academics, but also community service, improvement and growth in academics, SEL, all of those types of characteristic, character traits that we might look for in students. So it's not necessarily always your highest achievers who are always doing everything that you're, like, everything the top student might do, but also looking at growth in students as well. And we have one at sixth, seventh, and eighth every month. And Lily, the service dog, received one in December.
She has her certificate.
I love it.
That is great.
Yeah, it was a treat. I don't think I got to do this last year.
You didn't.
This is the first time we've done it since the pandemic. We did it once in the 2019-20 year, and then it's been online since then.
And Students of the Month are selected by their grade level teachers?
Correct. So the grade level team gets together, and they discuss who they feel should be the Student of the Month.
Thank you.
Okay, let's wait for it. So Martha, you are complete, so that takes us to Consent Agenda. Did the Board Secretary read the contents of tonight's consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the meeting minutes from our regular business meeting of January 18th, 2023, the personnel report as presented in Board Book, the payables pre-list as of January 31st, and payables pre-list as of February 15th, 2023, the employee recognition event for 2022-2023 school year, which is the annual recognition we do for the staff every year, and the employee wellness event of 2022-2023, which is a health, I don't know how to describe that. Yeah, just standard wellness screening type thing, where you can get some money for participating in a wellness screening, which is just a nice health thing that we do for the district. And that is it.
All right. Would anyone like to remove an item for further discussion? All right, if not, is there a motion that the Board approved tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes?
All right, next on our agenda is Riverside Education Council. Okay, nothing there, so then that brings us to Board Member comments. Any Board Member comments? Anybody go to the Blythe Park Dance? A week ago, a week and a half ago? That was a great time. That's, that's, it's the first elementary school dance I've been to in quite some time. That's a great, I'm so glad that they were able to put it on. I'm so glad to the teachers, to the staff, to Kazmir, to everyone at Blythe Park for putting that on. Both my kids had a great time. And oddly enough, the parents, I think parents, at least I was talking to, seemed to have a great time as well. It was always nice to be around, have people back again, as we're doing here tonight. It's great to have these traditions that have been kind of a little bit put away for a couple of years. It's nice to bring them out again, and everybody to meet and say hi with each other every now and again.
We got to, my daughter, a fifth grader at Hollywood, we attended the pasta night here at Hauser, put on by the PTO. And it was a really great event. I think the turnout was more than they were expecting. They ran out of pasta at a certain point. And it just, it just, for me, allows me to see the various kind of events and initiatives that the district has in place to help our fifth graders transition into Hauser, in addition to, you know, the transition to Hauser Summer School, and then the upcoming district-wide fifth grade game night. And then that opportunity, there was like an amazing race where they got to do a scavenger hunt throughout the school to familiarize themselves with the building and, you know, get to know some of the other incoming sixth graders. So, yeah, it was, it was a really exciting time, but it is always bittersweet to be leaving your little home elementary school. But it was a nice event.
I was going to say the same thing, but thank you for just echoing, so I'm just going to echo whatever Stephanie said.
Did you get pasta, or did it run out by the time you got there?
No, I got pasta, I got pasta.
And I know the PTOs have been really talking with each other at those monthly meetings about trying to be more, just figuring out how to be more coordinated and, like, with the fifth grade game night and those transition things, just continuing that. So a lot of work from the PTO teams trying to really stand those things up and have them go over really well, and then kids meeting other kids from the other schools that they might not know and all that kind of stuff. So a lot of work being put into coordinating those events, so glad you're enjoying them for those of you participating.
Yes, indeed. Many thanks to the PTOs from all the schools.
It's not a, it's not a small task trying to organize that many people together at the same time.
All right, anything else? All right, if not, that will take us to committee reports. First up is education.
I don't think we have any updates tonight.
No.
Stay tuned for next time.
All right, next then is policy.
Yeah, most of the Policy Committee updates are going to fall under Old Business, Action Idoms, and just by way of reminder, at our March Committee of the Whole meeting, we will finalize our review of Press Update 110, but otherwise, no other updates tonight.
All right. Then next is facilities.
Thanks, Dan. We've got a couple bids to approve on the old business agenda, and then we had, that was last week, on the 7th, we discussed the board feedback on the central Hauser proposal and the best ways to get to our end results and still navigate the Village process, and DLA is working towards that, and we think we've accommodated all the right elements of what we want. And so they are revising their plans, and we'll be presenting those plans at the March 22nd Planning and Zoning Meeting. And you're welcome always to, for a variation request. The public is always invited in to speak to that, so that's available to us, not to me, but to the rest of us. Yeah.
So a super quick question for you, and we can talk offline if we don't need to get into a big discussion here, but with the fencing, do we, we had gotten the cost difference from RMESH, but I wasn't sure, do you know the total linear feet of fencing that we're actually asking for? And I know we've had some modifications and discussing about where we are and aren't going to put a fence, so that may not be finally decided, but I was just kind of curious, looking at those cost totals, trying to get an idea of the difference that we're talking about. This is pretty sizable.
Well, the cost difference was $60 for Chain Link versus $140, I believe, for the, I call it ornamental architectural fence. There is not a number here on this.
No, I tried to look, I was going to try to do the math, and I just, I was like, no, I'm not. That's part of the determination not yet made, too, into the.
Yeah, we'd have to go back. The fence prices that RMESH quoted are very similar to what I would see at work, so that's not, it, the fence should be durable enough and.
Yeah, because we're probably just talking about a couple hundred feet of difference of whether we put a fence in or not, and so whatever that final cost is, I mean, I don't think it's going to be.
So 100-foot fence would be an $8,000 difference, so maybe we're talking in the area of $20,000-25,000. Don't quote me on that, but that's probably pretty close to where it's at.
Yeah. And I know Ryan had sent a follow-up about forgetting you had the curb extension thing in here, and I just, I know that was talked about at zoning and planning. Is that, I know they're, like, now we're talking about street traffic, so like.
We talked about it, and to best work with the Village, because those are two very different things. The street is working with the Village, because it is a Village-owned street, it is Village right-of-way.
And they have different traffic engineers than we do, and we got to figure that out.
That's, yeah, working with the engineer, whereas planning and zoning deals with anything that we want to.
Oh, gotcha, so the curb thing isn't even a zoning planning issue.
It really isn't.
Straight up a Village issue.
And that's why Ryan is going to be working on some exhibits to present to the Village, and then see where we can go from that.
Gotcha.
In general, there's always, and I'm not speaking for the Village, I'm just speaking from a more, what I've seen at my job, but there's always sensitivity to things in the street, because one aspect of engineering says, get the cars through as quickly as possible. And then there's the complete streets perspective, which says that streets are for, or that right-of-way width is for everyone, and there's a safety issue involved, and so there's basically competing, I'll call them agendas. Competing philosophies on how best to do it, and that's why that ends up being a Village discussion, because it is, there's traffic considerations that go into that.
Yeah.
Does that answer?
Yeah, no, it does. And when it comes to the street, I mean, we don't really have much control over that, but we can provide ideas.
We can propose, and I know we've had commentary from the Village about cleaning up some pavement marking, for instance, that was at Ames, so it's just more, it's a collaborative discussion where it's like, here's what we're interested in, and here's our goal.
Yeah.
This is an idea of how to meet it. The Village Engineer may. This is an idea of how to meet it, the village engineer may come up with something that gets us to the exact same spot, but in a way that the village likes more and feels like they can maintain.
Yeah. I did, I'll just say, I did go back and listen to the full planning committee discussion, and it actually was really good, so if any of you were interested in it, I thought it was worth the ninety minutes or whatever discussion. There was a lot of really good points, and even, like, listening, just, you were trying to kinda weave that line without speaking for anybody, so I just went back to, I wanted to hear what they said, and I thought there were some really valid points and considerations and ideas and stuff like that, that, um, really just got me thinking a little bit differently than some of our conversations, so just throwing that out there if any of you guys are interested in, in hearing some of that direct feedback.
Thank you for saying that, 'cause I was trying to interpret but not speak for.
Right, yeah, I could tell you were trying real hard to, to find that line, so, um, but it was, it was a good conversation, so I, I enjoyed listening to it.
But just sort of going back to the fence, I'm, I'm making the assumption that the difference, though, there is varying differences, I mean, we just got sort of estimates for two types of fence, I mean, between chain link and wrought iron, I'm, I'm assuming there's, uh, some sort of, there's a, possibly an in-between, or multiple in-between.
It's not really, it's not wrought iron, it's, it's ornamental, so it's going, it's probably going to be either some steel, hollow steel or aluminum, um, I don't know that if, that's pretty much, yeah, you can go, you can go up in fanciness with chain link, but you're still getting chain link, and once you're in that wrought iron, you're into more customization and, um, material that is not just out of a, out of a steel squeeze tube, um, so there's, not really, I haven't seen that much difference in prices, the, where you could get price difference is usually in the height.
Yeah.
Um, chain link is very easy to put up, and you, you put some posts in, you put some horizontal bars, and then you roll out the fence fabric, which is the chain link part, and then you, you wrap it around with essentially, uh, twist ties, if you want, I'm exaggerating, but that's, it's, it is that simple, whereas the, uh, ornamental, you have to make sure you get the posts in exactly at the right spacing, and then each p, each panel is going to be manually placed and screwed in, and, uh, there's probably some touch-up rules on if they happen to ding it up, and it's just, it's more labor-intensive to put up as well. Uh, we can talk, Dave, we can talk to Ramesh about different options, but I doubt we're gonna see that much in the middle.
Okay.
I will paraphrase the question someone asked me at Costco on Monday, uh, wondering about, in particular, the fencing along Aitkinside, wondering about what's there currently being like hedges, and very definitely, I, I've driven by it a while, but I imagine it's kind of loosely spaced, wondering is it possible or an option to accomplish something similar to what we're talking about with the fence, with having a denser set of hedges or shrubs or something?
Typically, I think for, and I'll, I'll say things and try and navigate as well as I can.
Mm-huh.
Um, for our purposes, when we're talking about keeping balls from going or kids from going, you would rather have the fence, because at some point, one of those shrubs is going to die, or in winter, they'll be not, you know, very, um, filled with vegetation, so you could think about it, but from what I think the board was saying here, we would rather lean towards a fence.
I think those are lilac bushes, what you're talking about, and I only know that 'cause I live nearby, but that, I get what you're saying about the safety or the, the kid with the...
And, and this is, a fence, it's not in exchange for the bushes, you can still have the bushes.
I was just gonna say, can we do both?
Yeah, no, I would love to see those lilacs on Aitkinside remain, and that's a totally different issue than what we're talking about with the fencing, but, yeah, it's an interesting question, anyway, that's a good...
Well, and that might be a good confirmation, I'd asked that at the last meeting, and Ryan, so those are gonna, I mean, in order to do the construction, they're gonna have to rip all that stuff out, so I don't know that, like, can we have them remain and get all that heavy equipment in and do what we need to do, or?
Oh, yeah.
Can we?
Because you would just bring the heavy equipment in through the parking lot.
Okay.
It's really a question of what that frontage is, and I know that as part of, I believe, sorry, I should before I quote myself, I believe that when Ryan was looking at that fence, they did set it a little bit further into our yard, so that would give you the opportunity, but, uh, we would have, we could input that to DLA.
I'm mainly a facility advisory, I don't actually...
Yeah, 'cause they've been there a really long time, those are very mature bushes, you know?
Very mature.
Like are the ones on Long Common, if any of those historic homes that you drive by have just giant lilacs, and it's kind of a trademark of the historic district in a way, so, yeah, I mean, it's not, I'm not gonna push, you know, my own agenda, I'm just thinking it's just so gorgeous and nice for the kids, and, you know, nice to have.
Yeah, if we could leave them, that would be great, but I think if you had to rip them out, you'd have to put new ones, and it'll take forever for them to get back there.
Right, it's what I'll call a design detail, it's, and it's because it will be indicated as part of those plans, and it's not essential to the basic concept that we're looking for, so we can certainly talk to DLA, and we can ask them to save those.
Yeah.
It depends where that fence really is.
It's kinda the similar conversation to the trees in the front yard, it's just a matter of, you know, what would you like to keep, the village may not, may have input, may not, but, um, so, yeah.
And that is, but that's one piece, we are gonna have to go to zoning and planning with those, that fence, 'cause that fence is a variance, right?
The fence is a variance.
So they're gonna wanna know chain link versus, like, what style of fence, whereas, right?
Say that again.
So there was a lot of debate on fence, no fence, chain link versus not chain link, some people were like, I don't mind a fence, but not a chain link fence, and, so there's just a lot of different opinions on that, if we kept those hedges, that would hide the fence, so then is there, is it more palatable to go with chain link, but then I'm also wondering, depending on, right now, we have your standard metal-looking chain link on both sides of the parking lot, would we replace that with the black chain link, and then if we want wrought iron, then you got chain link and wrought iron, like, that's not very, like, that doesn't make sense, like, what, what decisions do we need to have made to get approval versus not?
For the planning, for planning and zoning purposes, you actually summarized it well, there were certain people who would not, who were not necessarily in favor of any fence at all, there were some who were willing to accept the idea of a four-foot, uh, ornamental, uh, I don't think anyone was in support of the six-foot chain link.
No.
And I'll be honest, I'm not either, this is where I will say something, not my purview, but, um...
You're allowed to say what you think.
You're a board member here.
You're not representing other people.
No, I was, I was specifically told by the, uh, the village lawyer that I was not allowed to, when I had to recuse myself, I could, at planning and zoning, I could not say anything, even as a member of the public, because that was seen as potential...
Okay.
Okay, makes sense.
Confusing things horribly, we'll just say.
Still a member of this board, though, I think it's relevant to this discussion.
Oh, no, no, yeah, it's fine here, I'm just saying we're, um...
Yeah, and planning, yeah.
I went out there, when was, we were talking about meeting, oh, after, on the seventh. The fence along the north side...
Yep.
Is really tall, really old, and also very much embedded in the vegetation.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever were thinking about removing that in these plans.
That's, that's left alone.
It's still functional.
That was left alone, um, partially, I don't know if we own it or the neighbor owns it.
Right.
And one of the issues with, and I can talk about this easily enough, 'cause it's more work-related, but whenever you touch the edge of a right-of-way line, if you have to have people do anything on the other side, you need some kind of permission, on the public side, you need an easement, and so that means property negotiations, whereas if you leave that fence there, you don't have to deal with any of that at all. Um, the fence on this side, sorry, right out there along the driveway is actually in pretty good shape, from my viewpoint, um, it's galvanized, but it's, the vast majority of it looks like it was replaced a while ago, and so it is, it's, looks silvery, and it doesn't look bad, um, and it seems solid enough. Along the church side, I didn't look at it as carefully, and I honestly, I don't know who owns that, if we do.
And that would also stay as existing fence.
And that was always planned to stay as existing, too. And you, don't forget, you're talking about sixty bucks a foot, times whatever the length is, and is that, we're gonna put a fence back there no matter what, so do you want the perhaps better aesthetics of the black chain link, or do you just put your money into something that's more important to us?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, cohesion, so now you're gonna have, I'm just gonna say, old, whether, what, regardless of condition, you're gonna have an old silver fence, and then a new black fence, one, whether it's ornamental or chain link, it's just not very cohesive with, and then we're gonna do wrought iron around the playground, we're gonna have black chain link and silver ch, like, it just, it doesn't feel like that's coming together very well, but...
Honestly, it's hitting you.
That's what I'm just trying to figure out, like, what decisions do we need for variances, and what decisions can we make later?
Uh, I mean, it is...
But I think that Aitkinside fence, we gotta figure out what it's gonna be, right?
Fence at Aitkinside and the fence that comes from Aitkinside up along our own parking lot are the two that are under village purview, that we're zoning and planning has to still weigh in yet before additional decisions can be made, right?
Actually, Martha, that's a good reminder, too, if we don't touch those fences, and this was something Dave and I discussed with DLA, if we don't touch those fences, which one of them is really tall, probably 'cause there was ball field there.
Right.
If we don't touch them, we don't have to have a discussion with planning and zoning. If we do start talking about that, then that opens up another can of worms, and that was part of the reason I really didn't wanna, I wasn't on the school board side interested in opening that up for discussion, I don't think there's any benefit to us to doing that, I think the, the fence along Aitkinside, that's a discussion point, you summarized it pretty well, uh, planning and zoning decided they did not have any opinion on the fence around the playground area, because it was set back far enough.
Right, you can't see it.
But we're not gonna, I mean, are we gonna put a black chain link fence around the...
Oh, that was always gonna be wrought iron.
Yeah, I know, but now you're talking about, like, I don't know.
I don't know if we still have much in terms of black chain link any, anywhere.
We don't have any.
Because the way it's been cut, changed.
Yeah.
So it may all be wrought iron at this point, except probably the, the baseball, the backstop.
The backstop, and so much of it, he's right, is embedded in the vegetation, if you walk over there, it, it really looks almost like a natural wall, because it's been there that long, but it's just been infiltrated, and in a way, it's kind of cool that it just does its thing, um, so I wouldn't worry, I'm not as worried too much about cohesiveness as I am, I, I would be more worried about the Aitkinside street front, honestly, with the bushes, than I would about that particular area, but that's just me, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah.
Did I...
Yeah, no, I'm good, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Uh, then next up is personnel.
Wait, can I just ask one really quick question?
Yes.
So, the next step is the planning and zoning meeting on March twenty-second.
It's the formal presentation for, um, a recommendation to...
Okay, so there'll be no, before, prior to that, they're not, there will be nothing here, presentation, okay, just banking sure, so...
You know, we had, we had talked about that, I mean, the agendas obviously haven't been set for March first and March fifteenth, but if the board wants to have more conversation, we could certainly set up that opportunity, but there won't be any additional feedback from the village that really does sort of create the scenario.
I just wanted to make sure that March twenty-second is the next.
Yeah, I think it's nice to have at least some guidance from that, otherwise, we'd just be talking in a circle, because we're waiting on...
Yeah, unless there's some reason to...
Unless something comes up, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be...
And that's what you said, Ryan is gonna do that, right?
Right, Ryan has a, Ryan will be at the zoning and planning, he'll present on behalf of the district, I think a couple of board members are gonna be there, I'll be there, um, and then...
Just as audience members?
Uh, there will be...
Ryan will present, right?
The general, there will be, Ryan will, there will be a public hearing to do a variance request, that is an opportunity for anyone and everyone to speak.
Okay, great.
Uh, Ryan will make a presentation as part of that, and then at some point, that public hearing will be closed, and then any, any further discussion is only among the planning and zoning members.
The members, okay.
Yes, there, there's no interaction with, once you say your piece, and you can have, it is interactive, I mean, there is discussion at the public hearing portion, but at the planning and zoning discussion of the variance, there's, it's only amongst that group of six, they will make a recommendation, we, as a board, hope that it's a recommendation to approve the variance, and then the village board will get that recommendation, and then they will, the village board has ultimate authority.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify timeline.
And I, I think, unless we hear something different, right, Joel, that we don't need to determine the turf, artificial turf compared to natural grass in March either, we, because MWRD will look at drainage rates, filtration rates, based on both, and with the idea that artificial turf would be a little bit more, um, less permeable, right, it would be less permeable.
Yes.
And, so really a decision, and I know that's a decision that the community is interested in, but it's likely that that would be in April, decision to the Board of Education.
That's what we've talked about, that we would, DLA will, and their civil engineer will pursue design elements that would allow for either artificial or natural, and, so that they would not get held up in their design process and finalizing their documents, and then we would have a discussion, like Martha said, April-ish, and then, uh, DLA and the civil engineer will then take whatever our final result is, incorporate it into their designs, and then apply to MWRD for the permit, and the MWRD permit can take anywhere from six to eight months, and they are, um, in my experience, they are not a body you negotiate with, so you either comply with their rules, or you go back and revise, so...
Joel, do they ever require a drainage, kind of, stern-like container under?
That will be proposed as part of making this work.
Yeah, because, yeah, I was wondering that, because of the RB, all the talks that they had there, and if that was still part of...
I believe it still is, uh, the swim club has an underground system as well, um, MWRD, their concern is how much water gets into their system at how quickly.
There was actually a lot of discussion from, is it Jason from WT?
Yes.
He, the, the, um, zoning and planning folks were asking a lot of that, and he was talking about, he actually got into some level of detail about how much water it would hold, but it would depend on X, Y, Z, but it'd be a big giant tank like we did at Ames that could hold however many gallons of water for up to like, two or three days, and like, slow drain, and all that kind of stuff, so...
You summarized it well.
Yeah, I guess it was a good, it was very informative.
I figured it had to be part of the others.
Um, if, if all we're do, if we're, if they, if DLA is not gonna come to our next COW, can we at least have it on the agenda to discuss what the final proposal actually looks like, 'cause I feel like there's still some final tweaks that need to be made, and I would just like to understand what exactly we're proposing before we officially propose it, especially with, like, where is fence going, where is fence staying, where is fence not gonna go that we thought was gonna go, there was a lot of debate on having fences on both sides of the sidewalks, but we're gonna have, you know, all that, so I, I would just like to understand what exactly we're proposing, just so that none of us are surprised later about some, some minor, quote-unquote, minor change. I don't know that DLA needs to be here, but, um, if we could just have a conversation about it, just so that we're all good with what is being proposed.
I'll reach out and check on their availability for March first or fifteenth, 'cause it probably doesn't matter, it could go on committee of the whole or regular board, because as long as it's in advance of March twenty-second.
Yeah, and they could bring an exhibit, and I would imagine that would just, that highlights the location of the fence, fences, whatever.
Just to save them some time, I don't know that they need to direct, 'cause aren't they far up north?
They're in Itasca.
Yeah, maybe they could just send it for us to look at.
Okay, it's not terrible, but like, I would hate for Ryan to drive all the way down here to point to.
Steve, as much, their office is in Itasca, I honestly couldn't exactly tell you where Ryan lives, I know that Steve lives...
They don't mind coming to any meeting, I mean, that's, that's part of the...
Okay, that's fine, if they would rather save themselves forty minutes or fifty, whatever minutes of drive time, we could zoom them in or whatever, I don't, I don't need them to drive all the way down here to point where they remove the fence.
Exactly.
And then leave, so, um, I just would like to understand, like, this is what we are proposing, officially proposing, before we actually propose it.
Makes sense. Yeah.
Any more questions for Joel?
And I'm, I'm planning on attending that zoning and planning, just to kind of hear the conversation, so if anybody has any comments they would like made, I can make them on your behalf as well, so, give you a couple weeks to think about that, if you're not able to attend.
And I, what Wesley already said is, listen to that discussion, because it was, I thought it was very collaborative.
Yeah, it was good.
All right, well, then that takes us next to the personnel committee.
I do not have anything new, we have the school lunch consultant proposal coming up here in a couple minutes, and we can discuss that there, nothing else.
All right, sounds good. Uh, finance?
Uh, no, no updates at this time.
Okay, and then as Wesley was mentioning, that takes us to old business, uh, first item under old business is the school lunch consultant proposal. First item under old business is the school lunch consultant proposal. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the food service agreement as presented?
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion?
Um, so I don't think there, I think the only change here, Martha, is I didn't actually go back and compare the previous quote, but I think this has been updated just to reflect the lesser time period, the delay. Um, or maybe that's a Jim question, I don't know, but I think-
About that school lunch contract?
Because I want to say it was like 40-something, now it's 39,000. I just assume that's cutting out those couple of weeks because of the delay in the contract.
Whatever we actually, whatever we actually start.
Um, the other thing was that we went with, uh, change it to a contract that the attorney recommended that he's got for school contractors, and it worked okay for Quest also.
Yeah, that was going to be my other comment, is I did not read this 19-page contract, because I am not a lawyer, and our lawyer said it was good, so I trust that it is good. So I don't know if any of you read it, but, uh, it, I read the hi, the he, the, uh, ABC headers and stuff like that, and I kind of perused it, but I'm kind of relying on the, the legal, our legal friends say if they're good with it, then I'm good with it, so those are the only two comments I really had. Nothing about the proposal has changed, it's just the timing in which we use them, and then the cost for that time. So I don't know if there were any other questions or comments, but I don't have anything else to add.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, uh, next item is public school calendar for 2023-2024 school year. Is there a motion that the Board of Edu, Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 school year calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I didn't notice any changes, I'm assuming this is the same.
Same.
Okay, didn't, yeah.
All right, well, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, uh, next up is the, uh, bid approval for Hollywood School Masonry Project. Is there a motion that the Board accept, the Star's recommendation that the Board accept the bid of and award the project to the Sail Year, Sail, Sail Years, maybe, Inc.?
Sailors.
Sailors, okay, that's easy enough, for the base bid amount of $248,500 for a total contract of $248,500.
So moved?
Uh, not quite yet. Or, wait, no, I guess that's it, the rest seems, well, our office has contacted Mr. Art Sailors, Inc., owner and estimator for Sailors, Inc., and verified his bid as being complete as submitted. I think that's it now.
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Trying to get my answer.
No discussion for me.
Uh, this is the, as the letter noted from DLA, this is the lowest of seven bids. Ramesh went over it last time and noted that this was a very, the bids were relatively tight for five of the bidders, which is generally an indication that this is a good bid. And I believe DLA has worked with this company in the past, and they also thought they were responsible.
And they were truly the low bid? We didn't have anybody get kicked off?
Yes, they are definitely the low bid. The next bid up was 259,000.
Yeah, it wasn't far off.
So only $10,000 off, and should note that this bid actually includes $20,000 for continuing that as well, so, or sorry, a $20,000 general allowance, which is essentially things that were missed and are, will then be covered under this work.
And again, this came in under, so I'm just kind of curious, is that just like market pressure, just trying to find the work, or did we just, were we just conservative or kind of budget estimate, or, just, just curious?
Uh, you don't know.
Don't know, okay.
You cannot, you cannot get into the head of a contractor?
I just, from, from Ramesh's perspective, like, it just, it just seemed a lot better than what we anticipated.
It could be, but you had, like I said, you've got, sorry, four bids that were ranged from 248 to 265.
Yeah, they were pretty close.
Uh, actually, then there's one that's 279.
Right.
And then there's one bid that was at 569 and one at 394. So were the, did the super high bids see something that no one else saw? Are they at the limit of their work capacity? But if they can get this one, then they're going to happen.
Yeah.
Sure.
Those are the things we, you have to think about, and you don't know the answer.
Well, that's why we did the lowest responsible bidder, so.
Uh, and supposedly there, there is some softening in the construction market a little bit.
Yeah, I was just curious if Ramesh was seeing anything that was driving it down, but it, it's irrelevant to the vote, so.
It's hard to tell, to be honest, Wesley. This is, this project is all labor, because it's people up on scaffolding, grinding out the old mortar and putting back new. So it's all handwork, there's very little efficiencies to be, uh, gained with machines or anything.
We've just had a couple come in favorable, maybe they just really want to work with our district because we're, we pay our bills.
That, that too, that makes a difference.
Well, or alternatively, their bids are being sent high, so as to look better.
Yeah. All right.
All right, any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, uh, next up is the approval of Hauser locker room, not locker room, excuse me, locker replacement. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the Hauser locker proposal contract as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these?
Uh, we discussed this last time as well, but this is essentially a one-for-one replacement of lockers that have reached the end of their, their life essentially, and, um, the bid is based on a, uh, sorry, I'm losing my words here, a, thank you.
Yeah, source well.
It's a co-op, which means that you have a group of contractors who bid on things, and then we can take advantage of that, that global bid. So that's why it's, it's considered to be fair, and this will replace approximately, if my math is right, about 586 lockers.
That's what it says here.
As I understand it as well, the cost is reduced by a $50,000 grant.
Yeah.
Yes, so our cost with that, I assume, Jim, that means our cost is just under 200.
You got the grant approved.
Two, oh, great.
No, we don't.
Mm-hmm. So I think, I mean, my impression is it went from 280 to 230 as a result of that grant, correct?
Right, 281. Right.
Mm-hmm. I think the, the price quoted to us was 230, but if you look at the, the, yeah, it says 280 is, is the bid, so I'm assuming that's how we get to-
The bid's 280, but we'll have 50,000.
Right, exactly, that's, that's how we get there, I guess is what I'm confirming.
So 230 out of our pocket.
Yes.
So Jim, 280 for the bid, minus 50,000 for the grant, means 230 out of our pocket.
Right. Yeah.
And I know there was a question about the steel prices, but this is exactly the same, so this is the updated bid with verified prices, because that last bid was only good for 15 days, or the quote was only good for 15 days.
This quote says the exact same thing, it's good for 15 days, so I assume we've, Ryan's confirmed that.
Oh, and actually, I didn't even realize, yeah, this date is still 12/9, so do we know that this is 280,000, or is that going to change after we approve this?
Do you think the quote could change?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Because it's now more than 15 days?
It's like two and a half months.
Would it change? Because it's now more than 15 days.
Because the date's from December?
If, if the number of lockers changed?
No.
No, no, no.
Quote, price.
So when we reviewed this last meeting-
Oh, it did not change, I'm sorry, he went and got an updated one.
Oh, okay, so it's the same.
So it's locked in now, and he said it did not change.
Okay. Okay, because the proposal date is still December 9th, 2022, but as of today, it's still this 280,700.
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I'm assuming this would just happen this summer, because it references the incoming larger sixth grade class. How long do we know, like, estimated amount of time a project like this takes over the summer?
It depends, they have to fabricate them first, but, um, the plan is still to get them done this summer.
Before school starts.
Right. Do not interfere with summer school.
Well, right, and we have to get those Hauser kids that are upcoming Hausers a chance to run around the hallways and look at everything.
At least that's not what happened to campus summer school, so we'll, yeah, we'll work around that schedule.
Take it out, put the new one in, and put some fancy stuff around it to plug the holes, and I'm sure it's more complicated than that, but I would think you could do that in three months.
All right, anything else? All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, uh, next up is Press Plus 110 Update Memo, second reading for sections two through five. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the second reading and approval of Press Plus 110 Policies pertaining to Sections two through five as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a reminder, this, these are the policies that we reviewed at our Committee of the Whole meeting, a combination of five-year updates, known as review and monitoring, some that had just minor changes. We went through any that had substantial changes, there were no, um, issues. And just by way of reminder, policy 5250, Leaves of Absence, does have a board question that we agreed we would respond no to, the question about fully, requiring fully vaccinated employees to participate in COVID testing. So I just don't, I didn't see that on the agenda, but, um, 525, the board question?
It's, it's there, it's not called out specifically, but yeah, it's, I'm glad you brought attention to it.